Charles, it's up to him soon.
I know, I know. I got you, I got you. Is it nine o'clock? Oh, it's nine oh one. We ready? Share, is, where's Sherri at? Sherri here?
She's right over there.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, she's making the way around.
Okay, alright. Good morning. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners. Nine AM Tuesday, October first, 2024 regular scheduled board meeting. We will begin with our invocation from Pastor Leonard Himes, who will also lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If I could have everyone to please stand. I didn't think about.
Well, good morning. Let's pray this morning. Our Father, we thank you for-
For yet this another day. The first day of October, Lord, and we ask your blessings as we venture into this month. That you touch our government, all of our workers that labor there. And Lord, we invoke your presence into this meeting. And Father, I lift up especially this month our Chair and her surgery recovery, that you'd bless and keep her. And Lord, to all of our employees that, at this time, as we celebrate the Breast Cancer Awareness Month, that we would look to thee in all of our lives, spiritually and physically, for healing and strength. So help us this day, meet with us, and we'll certainly thank you and praise you, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you Pastor Himes for your prayer. You all, I had knee surgery a week ago today. And give me a few weeks and I'll be running around with this new bionic knee that I have. So just be patient with me. Okay, next item on the agenda is going to be a recognition, pillars of excellence recognitions. And if we could have our county manager Sherri Matthews and our cluster lead Shannon Sanyo come forward to present these pillars of excellence recognition.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Madam Chair, we do have a proclamation for breast cancer awareness, so we'll do the pillars of excellence first, and then we'll let Ms. Robinson come up and do the proclamation.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay.
Is that fine? Okay, very good. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our cluster lead Ms. Shannon Sanyo, who will update the board on the special recognitions this morning.
Okay.
Good morning. Thank you all. Good morning Chair, the public, and Board of Commissioners. As the county manager has spoken, we are presenting this morning our first pillars of excellence awardees. These individuals amongst a team adhering county, we're so fortunate to have them, are talented and committed. They go consistently above and beyond in their duties. Their professionalism, integrity, and dedication are what make our county successful. We are proud to recognize a few of Henry County's best for their efforts in exhibiting our pillars of excellence. Our pillars of excellence are accountability, collaboration, fiscal stewardship, integrity, and service. A Henry Cares, Henry Committed card has been left at each of your stations. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Ryan Morris, Director of EMA, excuse me, Mr. Ryan Morrison, Director of EMA, Ms. Meredith Butler, Communications Coordinator, and Ms. Monique Franklin, Grant Administrator, to join us for photo. Commissioners, I also want to introduce, although he's not presently here with us, our airport technician too, Mr. Jeff Weaver. Just reemphasizing why Jeff was selected as one of our pillars of excellence. He is actually out today on personal leave. He is volunteering his time to help those in Asheville, North Carolina, who are impacted by the hurricane. Commissioners, if we could have you all to join us, we'd like to get this group in for photo.
So am I standing up or standing up right now?
Put everybody close to the chair if you can.
Yeah, I'm good. Yeah. Okay. Awesome. Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, okay. Wait a minute, hold on, hold on. No, I'm not sitting down. Okay, so we're going, next, next item on the agenda is the proclamation for, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I'd like to ask our communications director Melissa Robinson to please come forward to read the proclamation.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. This morning, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas each year, countless Americans face the challenges and emotional toll of breast cancer, with projections indicating that 310,720 women and over 2,800 men will be diagnosed by the end of this year. Whereas the memories of those we've lost drive our unwavering dedication to find a cure. It is heartening to acknowledge that advancements in early detection and treatments have significantly reduced the mortality rates over the past decade. And whereas, we emphasize the role of proactive health measures, encouraging all women to discuss mammograms and early detection strategies with their healthcare providers. And whereas, by increasing awareness, supporting research, and promoting preventative practices, we make strides toward eradicating this disease and honoring the courage of all of those who have been affected. Now therefore, let, let us unite as a community to uplift one another, share vital information, and champion ongoing progress in the fight against breast cancer. Together, we celebrate the resilience of survivors, cherish the memories of those we've lost, and commit to fostering a future free from the burdens of this disease. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Johnny Wilson, Commissioners Neet Robinson, DeAngela III, Michael Price, and Kevin Lewis, that October is designated as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And we encourage all Henry County residents to spread awareness, support those impacted, and educate others about the prevention and early detection. Together, we can make a difference. Signed this day, first day of October 2024.
Thank you so much. And I know that we have some individuals here with us this morning. Ms. Norma Toplin and her church members for Triumph, the Church and Kingdom of God in Ellenwood. If you all would like to please come forward. I know that, I'm sure that breast cancer has impacted or affected each of us in some way, form, or fashion. I know that my mother is a breast cancer survivor and my father currently is going through prostate cancer. So this is near and dear to my heart. I don't know if any of the commissioners have any comments or whatever, but thank you for coming to accept this proclamation today. I'm gonna let you all hold it down there.
Good morning.
Good morning. And any members that would like, anybody that would like to come forward.
If we could have county staff that's in any pink attire, if you all could come up as well.
Judge Board, I know that you're here. Would you come forward? You're dressed in your pink. Let's get this pink picture. Yeah. Yeah, come and go up here.
Alright, everybody, if you want to go up in the back, some of you, let's all squeeze in.
Come on guys. Militella up here, please. Militella, come up here and let me, I'm gonna turn it is short.
We're gonna take a couple. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. Thank you all.
And I just want to get one picture with the church and, yeah. And we'll make sure that you all get a copy of this picture.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay, thank you. Uh-uh, this is it. This is the last one. Uh-huh, yes, uh-huh.
Thank you ladies, thank you very much.
Okay. Did you, did you want to make any comments or you good? You can do it now if you want to. Go, go up to the mic for us, so we can, so everybody can hear you.
Good morning. I am not a talker, but I do want to give thanks to you all for inviting us in to receive this proclamation. It's very dear to my heart for October. I lost my mother to breast cancer. And my goal is to share and do things for others that my mother was not able to do. She didn't get a chance to ring the bell. She didn't get a chance to put on her evening gown and, and go out and be loved on the town. But I am grateful for everyone in here because you all are supporters, and I really, really do appreciate it. Commissioner, I love you. Thank you. Ms. Barnes, I love you. Thank you. I really do. Because one of the things that I wanted to, and I'm not gonna be long, one of the things that I wanted to do, because they asked me to take on the breast cancer awareness for my church. And we was just doing a walk and a church service. Well, I wanted to do something else for our survivors. I wanted to have a gala. And I wanted them to come for us to be able to love on them and share with them with their families. And God has made it for us to be able to do that. And I really want to say thank you to all of you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioner Robinson for taking the lead on that. Next item is, we have some presentations. Our financial update from David Smith, our financial services cluster lead. You look nice in your pink, David.
Thank you. So you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and the Henry County community. This morning, I'd really just like to provide a brief financial update. And I'm going to skip these two slides. Talk about where we stand for the general fund, our service districts, SPOS, T-SPOS, and everyone's favorite topic is going to be impact fees. That'll be the last slide that I'll address. I want to remind this board that the majority of county revenue is not collected until our November, December timeframe. So please don't be alarmed by the huge negative numbers that you're going to see at this point in time. We utilize fund balance for the majority of it. So year-to-date revenues are 8.7 million. Our year-to-date expenditures are $38.2 million. And so that $29.6 million gap, although it being significant and using up our savings quickly, I'm quite comfortable with where we stand at this point in time because we're only at 14.7% instead of the 17 or 16% that we could be for budgeted expenditures at this time of year. The primary reason is our increased countywide insurance premiums, our payments, and the timing of our certificate of participation debt payments that we have. Going back to these two slides, it's our numerical representation of where we stand. If you wanted to take a look at that. So let's talk about SPOS. SPOS and T-SPOS revenues continue to trend higher than expected. Our expenditures remain down as most resurfacing projects are really just starting to get underway. There have been no significant expenditures, even though you see a lot of work going on over at the Aquatic Center. No significant expenditures have been reported for the Aquatic Center at this time. This is a numerical capturing of our revenues on a monthly basis and the expenditures. As you can see, they're trending lower. There's a graphical representation of where the blue line is our budget line. The green line is our revenues, and then you can see the expenditures. Same for T-SPOS. The graphical representation of T-SPOS, where you see revenues trending higher than what we've budgeted and expenditures is definitely lower. So let's talk about impact fees, what everyone's been waiting on. Especially one particular commissioner likes to spend impact fees in his district. And so, impact fees, I want to remind everyone that they must be spent on new capital improvements or equipment, but the equipment has to have a life of at least 10 years or more. It can't be something that's under five years. It can only be spent in the district that it's collected. This slide that you have in, in front of you shows the amount that's available by district at this point in time. This slide shows the amount available by district by category. It's a reminder that there's a difference between the amount that we actually recognize and the amount that we realize due to when we first started collecting impact fees. Some fees are not collected until the actual certificate of occupancy has been collected. That's been the practice before, but this was changed with the recent resolution to increase impact fees, where we can now collect impact fees at the time of issuance. I'm prepared to respond to any questions you may have.
Is this presentation available to board members, to the board members? Okay, alright, great. Are there any questions or comments from the board, Commissioner Wilson?
David, could you back it up one slide and look at the green space? I see all the districts are the same on green space collections.
This is the slide you're referring to?
Yes.
So that's based upon a percentage that was set aside for green space? That would be the amount that's been allocated for green space. Yes, sir.
But each district collected the same amount of money per district? Is that what I'm seeing?
The percentage that is allocated is that amount. And then with green space, I also allocated an amount because earlier, before we started, when we were collecting impact fees and we weren't recording them in the actual district. I think you'll remember there was a time when we set aside for districts to, there was one district collecting all of the impact fees, and they wanted to split that, which we were told we couldn't do, went back and adjusted the amount that should be allocated to each district for impact fees.
Yeah, and I see it's done for the sheriff as well, looks like PD.
Correct, in terms of their percentages.
Is this because these are countywide? Because-
So each-
Sheriff's Office serves the county countywide. The police department serves the county countywide. And so does animal control. You know, that's kind of a countywide thing. So is that the reason why?
No ma'am.
Okay.
Each category that you see on the left-hand side is allocated a specific percentage. And then each district that collects, let's say, let's go to District Five currently and District Three, where you have the most development. You'll see where their percentages are not the same in terms of where you've collected for road improvements or you've collected for the fire amounts. The sheriff, in terms of where we had collection before, I had to allocate an amount there to adjust for everything that was being collected. But that's why you would see the differences in percentages for fire. You'll see, you should, you would see a difference in road improvements, and you'll also see the differences in parks and rec.
I'll have to follow up with you on that because it's not-
Understood.
Yeah, we, because it's not, it's not really making a whole lot of sense to me if, if we only spend, if we only collected in the district with the amount of permits issued. And all these numbers are matching across the library, the green space, fire, sheriff, and most of them are just, uh-
Be glad to follow up with you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I mean, just to follow up with Commissioner Wilson, I mean, that, that is a fair question. Knowing that the bulk of the impact fees collected in the county are in District Five, so why are the allocations for green space the same in District Five as they are for everyone else? I know we wrote in rumors, yeah.
County manager, do you have a comment?
So we'll be forced to remember that we have three special service districts. And so the numbers are going to be much higher within those special service districts because the impact fees will go specifically to those districts in which those special service districts are allocated or that, in which those special service districts were created. So if you look at the police, fire, and parks and rec, you'll see the uptick in the dollar amount for those impact fees because a greater amount's going to go within those districts in which those impact fees are collected. But we can certainly go back and revisit the numbers and, and make sure that we bring this back to the board. But I do believe it's because of the special service districts where you'll see the difference in those three categories versus the percentage that's required to be allocated for the non-special service districts. But we will follow up, Commissioner Wilson and Lewis.
Commissioner Price. Okay. Thank you David.
Thank you ma'am.
Next item is the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds update. We have our grants administrator, Monique Franklin, to please come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Board of Commissioners and Pillars of Excellence.
COVID-19 pandemic has found affected communities.
Okay. Today, I'm here to provide you all an update on Henry County ARPA funding as of August 31st, 2024. But first, we would like to share with you a brief demonstration of our ARPA dollars at work in the community.
The COVID-19 pandemic has found affected communities around the nation, and Henry County was no exception. To help Henry County recover from the impact of the pandemic, federal funds were made available to assist the county and other communities across the country in their recovery efforts. In 2021, the Henry County government received more than $45 million in federal funding as part of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, otherwise known as ARPA. These ARPA funds helped our community recover from the pandemic, bounce them back stronger and healthier. Through investments in public safety, Henry County emerged even more secure. Those investments include command vehicles for the county's emergency management agency and our police department, assisting enhanced crime response for the roads post-pandemic. ARPA funds were also utilized for the purchase of eight ambulances and express vans for the fire rescue departments. The vehicles were a key asset in managing public safety's ability to transport patients and handle surges in emergency calls. Through ARPA, Henry County was able to provide more resources for one of our most vulnerable populations, our seniors. The county used federal funding to implement COVID-driven renovations to several senior centers. These important projects allowed residents to enjoy the facilities at a lower risk of contracting COVID or other diseases. As food insecurity became a growing problem for seniors, the county invested in food boxes and transportation to boost its Meals on Wheels program. The county used ARPA financing to support the McIntosh Trail Community Service Board, a decision that allowed for uninterrupted service to those who need it most. And due to the rising housing costs threatening seniors and longtime residents, Henry County designated funds to the Kellytown Senior Living Complex, a 72-unit affordable housing development. Through low-income housing tax credits, residents 55 and older received no less than 30 years of affordable rents. Additionally, the county renovated housing units for low-to-moderate income families with children in the Henry County School District who were extremely impacted by the pandemic. Meanwhile, major athletic field renovations continue at county parks, including relighting, fencing, field upgrades, and necessary building maintenance, thus ensuring that Henry families have a safe, fun place to enjoy recreation and the great outdoors. We didn't forget about the Atlanta Motor Speedway either. Strategic investments in facility upgrades allowed the facility to survive the pandemic and continue offering great attractions for residents and visitors alike. As part of ARPA, Henry County emerged a healthier community too. County government worked with Piedmont Henry Hospital to fund a new observation unit, complete with 16-bay rooms in the hospital. The facility helps alleviate the overflow of cardiac care patients from the emergency room. Henry County is also making an investment to grow the Walnut Creek Reclamation Facility, increasing its treatment capabilities from 8 to 14 million gallons of water per day to ensure that the county sewer capacity keeps up with its growth, guaranteeing a supply of healthy drinking water. In these areas and so much more, Henry County government has been hard at work utilizing its ARPA allotment of state and local recovery funds to positively impact the whole community. Henry County cares that Henry County is committed to serving the community in its recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as to secure the vitality, vibrancy, and strength of Henry County well into the future.
Thanks. Uh-oh, one way, sorry. Good morning again. American Rescue Plan approved in March 2021 provided over $62 billion in emergency funds for eligible state, local, territory, and tribal governments to respond to COVID-19 emergency and bring back jobs. Henry County was allocated $45.5 million. These ARPA funds are non-reoccurring, which means they are one-time implementation into our county. Funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, which we are completely obligated, all of our funds, so we won't have any issue with that. Treasury designated 10 eligible expenditure categories. And to this day, like I said, that we have allocated all of our funds. So allowable uses for recovery funds. Henry County's priorities were public health response, negative economic impact, water and sewage infrastructure, and revenue replacement. This, this is a brief slide of showing where we allocated those dollars. As you can see, it's pretty much evenly across our major categories. You can see public health response, as you saw in the video, the command vehicles, the Piedmont Otivation Unit, negative economic impact, Atlanta Motor Speedway, human services, which was the community development projects, infrastructure, as well as revenue replacement. Including in your board package today, you will find a Henry County- Included in your board package today, you will find a Henry County Recovery Plan, Performance Plan Report. Did you all receive that? No?
It's in our package.
Okay. Which provides detail for each project, a project description, its purpose, the department or sub-recipient, and a total allocation of funds as of August 31st, 2024. In case you would like to share this report with your constituents, the reports will be posted on Henry County's website under the Department of Finance. And last but not least, the Department of Financial Services would like to take a second to thank all the departments of Henry County who managed and contributed to the hard work and compliance of these funds. If you have any questions.
No, thank you for the presentation, Monique. Uh, any questions from the board? Any questions or comments? It's in your, on your computer? On your computer? Okay. Yeah, it's in your, in, in the package, it's on the computer. Uh, can you, uh, make sure that, uh, each commissioner has emailed a link so that they can share it out, uh, with their constituents as they see fit?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next, uh, item is consent agenda. If we could have our county manager to please come forward, read the consent agenda. Uh, one of the things, under the course, I'm going to remove that off the consent agenda and that'll be the first item on the regular agenda.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, October 1st at 9:00 a.m. Under the county manager, we have a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Atlanta Incorporated. We have a de-annexation and it does not require a public hearing. It is for, Henry County has received a request for de-annexation from the City of Stockbridge to unincorporated Henry County for a total of nine properties located at 220, 230, 240, and 255 Jasper Drive, and 221, 230, 231, 241, and 251 White Sand Bay Drive, consisting of a combined 9.828 plus or minus acres in land lots eight and nine of the 12th District. This development is actually located in District Two. We have another de-annexation request that does not require a public hearing. Henry County has received a request for de-annexation from the City of Stockbridge to unincorporated Henry County for a total of nine properties located at 615 and 625 Edge Combe, 115, 145, and 150 Jasper Drive, and 340, 350, 360, and 370 Cariff Drive, consisting of a combined 11.58 plus or minus acres in land lots eight and nine of the 12th District. Those parcels are also located in District Two. Under the police department, we have a resolution awarding bid number 25-11 to TMDE Calibration Labs, Inc., to provide services for recertification and repair of laser and radar speed detection devices on a renewable contract basis for the Henry County Police Department, utilizing funds from the repair and maintenance account. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Uh, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. First item on the regular agenda that I moved from the consent agenda is a resolution approving the appointment of Henry County Magistrate Court Judge Andrea Boyd. Uh, do we have a copy of that resolution? How you doing, Judge Jones?
Doing well, Madam Chair.
She's going to get you a copy of the resolution too. April, you got a copy? Okay, awesome. All right. She has a copy right there. Awesome. If you want to talk to us a little bit about the resolution and what we are moving forward with.
Well, Madam Chair and Commissioners, uh, we have now lost Donnie Patton to the state court. You know, we've, uh, over the years have, uh, had several judges move up in the ranks and, uh, we're proud that Judge Patton is now assigned anyways as full-time state court judge. So we need to obviously replace him with another full-time employee. We, uh, are proposing Andrea Boyd. Andrea, as you know, uh, she and I met in unusual circumstances. We, uh, uh, kinda ended up liking each other even though we, we ran against each other. And, uh, I kept it open that if we had an opening for her, we'd bring her in. And, uh, and obviously we have one now. Quite frankly, I don't intend to run again and I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, she will run, uh, for chief magistrate, uh, next term. And, uh, she's excelled as municipal court judge in, uh, McDonough. I think that may be the issue that you all have, uh, with this appointment. In the past, um, we've had some, uh, back and forth about salaries, which has not ended yet. And I think it's, there's a proposal on, uh, helping to get a final resolution of the judge's salaries and I'm not directly involved in that. However, I have advocated for more money for my full-time magistrate's and as y'all know, uh, I don't think we've gotten any for, uh, quite some time. And, uh, because of that, we allowed, uh, Judge Patton to continue at, at Locust Grove Municipal Court. I'm not sure if y'all were aware of that. Judge Patton went from a 1099 employee working 20 hours a week to a full-time employee, W-2. Uh, that was the change that we made with him and we allowed him to continue going to Locust Grove. That was, uh, two days a month. And we had no problems from that. He certainly made up any, uh, lost time from that. Judge Patton's very dedicated and spent a lot of extra time at the office covering warrants and things of that nature. And so, uh, we propose to do the same thing, um, with Andrea because she is the, uh, full, and it's not a full-time position. She's a part-time municipal court judge. The difference between McDonough and Locust Grove is they hold court in McDonough, uh, four times a month. And we proposed that she be allowed to continue to go two days a month and then have her, uh, subordinate judges fill in on the other two. So she would be a W-2 employee as to the Board of Commissioners and 1099 as to the city. And, uh, quite frankly, without, um, opening up any wounds, I mean, I think this is a good middle ground to make up for the disparity of, uh, of, uh, what the judges sensed their salaries ought to be and what the commissioners may believe. So.
Thank you so much. And, and, um, you all have a copy of the resolution that was, um, uh, that's being presented to the board. I would just like to say, I'd like to ask, uh, Judge Boyd if she would just come forward up to the, uh, podium. It is a pleasure to, um, uh, to be able to have her to, uh, serve, uh, in this capacity. I know currently she serves as the Chief Magistrate Judge for the City of McDonough and I don't see a problem in her being in those dual roles, uh, as, um, serving, uh, as magistrate judge for the county as well. And I know that we have looked into this, uh, and, um, you know, so we're, we're just happy, you know. You, it, it, it is going to be a pleasure to have you. Um, you are, you know, out here active in the community and we really appreciate everything that you, uh, have done in the community, even on your personal level, uh, not being judged, but just out here in the community and, you know, how you care, uh, for others. And so we really look forward to you stepping into this role. Uh, so, uh, without further ado, I would like to, if there's no questions from the board, uh, then I'd like to see if we could get a motion to approve this resolution for Judge Andrea Boyd to be appointed as magistrate, uh, judge for, uh, Henry County, uh, Municipal Court.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, got a second. Uh, no further discussion, all in favor. Welcome to the team.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can, can we get a, a picture with, uh, Judge Boyd, uh, and everything? Can, is communications here? We could do a picture with us if you all were coming. You would come and stand here. I'll see if I can stand up one more time. I gotta walk. Come on, Ms. April. Thank you. Congratulations. Melissa, do you mind getting something from Judge Boyd for me? And as we move to the regular agenda, uh, we will have a, uh, there's going to be amendment to the regular agenda. I am adding the following item, moratorium to be modified. Uh, the North Ola Moratorium will be modified. That will be added to the agenda as well as an executive session for, uh, personnel matters. Um, so those two items, uh, county clerk Stephanie, that will be added to the regular agenda. So we'll begin with Department of Transportation. Uh, this is a public hearing.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. Uh, as you mentioned, this is a public hearing, uh, so a resolution for the Board of Commissioners to abandon and declare surplus, a portion of Industrial Parkway right-of-way. This, uh, request is from a representative of Bennett International, uh, for Henry County to abandon and declare surplus portion of Industrial Parkway right-of-way. It's shown on the attached plat, uh, which is in your exhibit. Um, this is the general location of the area. It's off Industrial Parkway, just south of Georgia 20. Uh, the portion of right-of-way requested to be abandoned, uh, was mainly for, or really was for the previous location of Industrial Parkway versus, uh, the curve that, that you see now. It used to go straight north through that area out to Georgia 20 when it was a two-lane road. As part of the Georgia 20 widening, uh, Industrial Parkway was realigned, making, uh, some right-of-way in that area, uh, of really no use to, to the county for maintenance of the road. The applicant owner is aware of utilities located within the existing right-of-way and understands these utilities remain in place and the abandonment was publicly advertised in the Henry Herald, September 21st and September 25th. And the adjoining property owner has been notified by certified mail. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, we'll hold questions until after the public hearing. Uh, this is a public hearing. Individuals, uh, willing to, uh, that would like to address the board, come forward. You have three minutes to address the board with regards to this matter. Having none, we're going to conclude public hearing and I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Motion carries. Okay.
Uh, good morning again. Uh, this next item is related to the, uh, previous one. This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to authorize the sale of the abandoned declared surplus portion of Industrial Parkway right-of-way. This is in Commissioner District Five. The, uh, to authorize the sale of declared surplus property, um, it has to follow OCGA 32-7-3 and 32-7-4. The area in question available to be disposed of is 9,520 square feet and it's shown on the, uh, plat that's attached within your exhibit. Um, again, the owners aware that there's existing utilities that remain in place. Uh, as stated in the OCGA, uh, 32, 7, 4, A, 2, B, if the value of the property is $75,000 or less, the county may negotiate the sale. The applicant has offered the county $5,000 for this, uh, parcel of property in question. I will make it known that it was appraised at $8,200. And, uh, the Bennett is interested in this property in order to place a sign on, on the property once they own it. You can't place a sign, Wilton County right-of-way for a sign of this type. And, um, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Okay. This part is not a public hearing, is it? Okay, all right, great. So, uh, here in the presentation, um, it, can I like to call for a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next item on the agenda is Stonewater Resolution approving the drainage improvements at Greenview Subdivision.
Good morning, uh, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners and Pillars of Henry County. I think this is a long-awaited project, I know, for, for the area and for District Four. Uh, as I mentioned, the chair mentioned it, this is a Stonewater, uh, project. Uh, it was identified the need of the drainage improvement at Green, Greenview Subdivision. Seal bids were solicited, uh, through the purchasing department for the construction of drainage improvements of the subdivision per bid number 2509. Uh, we received six, six seal bids, uh, and they were reviewed. The lowest bid is $1,539,452.75 from Summit Construction and Development, Inc., LLC. Uh, funding for construction services is available, uh, on the following sources. Uh, we're receiving funds from CWBG, uh, you can see the amount, $634,908. Uh, then from Stonewater Enterprise Funds, uh, the difference, which is $904,544.75. Uh, staff recommends approval of this, uh, improvement. And this is just a overview of, of the subdivision. Uh, one of the things, uh, this subdivision, the roads are not your typical roads. The roads are actually inverted, so all the drainage goes into the middle of the street. So it's definitely need a lot of improvements on, on the drainage because this, it's on, under the road. As, as a difference from all the roads or the parkways where the drainage is on the outside. So it's gonna be very complicated, but, uh, one of the things that we put in the contract was for the contractor to make sure that at the end of the day, the road is saved. Uh, you can see there in this picture, uh, the drainage inlet right in the middle of the road. I will take any questions.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Price, I know that this is in your district. I know that we received several emails from this particular community, um, with regards to the drainage. Um, any comments or?
Yes, I would just like to say I'm, uh, glad to see that this day has finally come. Um, I got this appointment in March and, uh, the first- Um, I got this appointment in March, and, uh, the first email I got was from a gentleman named, uh, Mr. Scott Cogle, who lives off of Foster. Uh, the second email I got was from Mr. William Grogan, um, who lives off Mosley, but he owns property in this community, and he had pictures and showed me that in one of the cul-de-sacs, whenever it rains, it's like a lake. Um, and I think I reached out to Chair, to reach out to Rocky, one storm we had, because it was really, um, like a lake. Um, and again, I'm just grateful, uh, that we were able to, um, find the funds to be able to do this. Um, it's been a six-month process, and I know I got on their nerves, always asking and checking, um, but I just wanna thank them for making it happen. And I'm sure that the residents of that community will be, um, excited as well. I know we're doing a lot of development, um, but I think in the midst of all of our development, we have to make sure that we don't forget our older communities as well, uh, that are the foundations, um, of our communities. And so, um, as Mr. Grogan shared, uh, they pay taxes as well. And so, uh, we're just grateful again to be at this point today, uh, to be able to make this happen for the community.
Okay, thank you so much, and, uh, thank you for your leadership on making sure that this, um, that, that we were able to find the funding to do this. Thank you to Shannon and her department, Raven, uh, from the Community Development, uh, block grant that allowed for us to be able to, uh, put this together. And so, uh, with that said, uh, would you like to make a motion to approve if there's no questions from the Board?
Okay. I would like to make a motion to, uh, to approve the resolution, uh, to award this, uh, project to the company that, with the Lord's bid.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor. Great job, Commissioner Price.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is transportation planning. If we could have our transportation direct, planning director, Sam Baker, to please come Sporting your pink?
Absolutely. Important cause. Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the community. I am pleased to share with you that, uh, Henry County has been awarded a SMART grant by the U.S. Department of Transportation. It's a very selective grant. Uh, 331 communities across the United States applied for this grant, and only 34 communities were selected. Henry County is one of those 34 communities. We are the sole recipient in the state of Georgia. Now, the U.S. Department of Transportation has given us this SMART grant for us to deploy and test a connected vehicle technology deployment prototype that will enable the Henry County Fire Department Emergency Response Vehicles to change traffic light from red to green at some of our busiest road intersections, and thus be able to pass through those busy intersections faster, uh, respond to emergencies quicker, and potentially save lives and property. The city of Marietta, Georgia, has already deployed connected vehicle technology ahead of us. The city claims on its website that Marietta has cut emergency response time by approximately two minutes per emergency call. Now, according to the American Heart Association, two minutes can make the difference between whether a person lives or dies for somebody who is having, um, cardiac, or cardiac arrest. Now, we also hope to accomplish, uh, achieve similar results, but we don't just want to, uh, install some equipment and just hope we'll cut some time. We want to verify it, and that's where this Henry County Connected Vehicle Technology Deployment Performance Analysis comes in. We, to date, we have installed 32 roadside units at some of, uh, our busiest intersections. We have installed 45 onboard units in Henry County Fire Department Emergency Response Vehicles. That's our prototype. We are going to activate these units, test them, collect data, analyze the data, and then report to answer one key question, and that is, did Henry County derive some benefits by deploying connected vehicle technology? We are going to compare, how long did it take for emergency response vehicles to respond to emergencies before deployment of connected vehicle technology versus how long does it take for them to respond after deployment of connected vehicle technology? Is there a time reduction? So, uh, to do that, we solicited proposals from consultants to do this analysis. We received several options, uh, proposals, and we have selected Kimbley-Horn to do this, uh, analysis for $232,000. The SMART grant will cover the entire cost of this analysis. There will be no cost to Henry County. Staff suggests that you, uh, approve our entering, entering into an agreement with Kimbley-Horn to conduct this performance analysis. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the Board? Commissioner Wilson?
I don't have a question. I got a comment. Thank you Sam for bringing this, because I can tell you from experience, it's challenging to get these vehicles through an intersection. And these, with the, um, the signal being read, McCovey said, what, it confuses everybody approaching the signal, trying to get through when it is read. Thank you for bringing this forward. It's safer for everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you as well, and I think that probably a lot of our accidents happen when our first responders are trying to get through traffic, uh, intersections. And so this will be, um, a huge, I think, this, this, this is actually is a SMART grant, and I think it is a SMART grant to help our first responders to move around the county faster. So thank you so much. Uh, I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. No, no further discussion, all in favor.
Henry County has plans to submit a subsequent Stage 2 SMART grant, um, application to the U.S. Department of Transportation to expand deployment of connected vehicle technology to entire Henry County. Now, let's say, uh, we managed to secure that second grant. We need to have a plan in place, what we are going to do, going to do with this grant. Well, so right now, we have roadside units deployed on 32, uh, intersections. We plan to expand this to entire Henry County. Uh, I envision having roadside units deployed at every major road intersection in the county that are classified, functionally classified, uh, Collector Street and above. Uh, we will see, uh, the number of additional Henry County Emergency Response Vehicles that we want to install onboard units. We have received phone call from McDonough Fire Department. They are interested in connected vehicle technology. We will talk with them, uh, we'll engage our four municipalities, and we will also engage the citizens of Henry County to come up with a plan, uh, for, um, the county. I will say that we are, uh, compared to many other communities, we are at the forefront of connected vehicle planning, and we will be the first community in the state of Georgia to come up with a county-wide connected vehicle technology deployment plan. So, uh, to do that, we solicited proposals, and we have selected a company called Sonamore Incorporated, which also does business as P3 Mobility, to develop this plan for $298,975. Again, the SMART grant will cover the entire cost. There will be no cost to Henry County. Staff suggests that you approve our entering into a contract with Sonamore Incorporated to develop the Henry County Connected Vehicle Technology Deployment Plan.
Hearing that, is there any questions from the Board? Any questions from the Board? Okay. Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. No further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you Sam for the presentation. Next item on the agenda is, um, the moratorium to modify the May 7th, 2024 North Ola Moratorium. This one will include additional parcels north of Highway 138, east of Airline Road as shown in, on the map. So at, at this particular time, Commissioner Anglin, I will turn it over to you.
First, let me say it's, uh, Highway 20. Um, there's a misprint there. Yeah, there's a misprint there. Um, first, I want to give a description of why the change, and then I will read the motion. So, we are wanting to expand due to the master plan for the North Ola area, uh, to the north of Highway 20 that would go to Airline and then ultimately over to Elliot Road. Uh, following a stakeholder meeting, it became aware to us, uh, that it would be in the benefit of the North Ola community that we go ahead and include the additional parcels north of 20. Uh, with that being said, uh, there is no cost associated with this. Uh, Moore Bass Consulting, who's handling this, did, uh, go ahead and say they would include this in the current master planned, uh, area that we have. Uh, with that, I'll go ahead and read the language, uh, for the motion. So I would like to call for a motion to modify the May 7th, 2024 North Ola Moratorium on rezonings, comprehensive plan amendments, lot modifications greater than five total acres of area, and residential development applications to include additional parcels north of Highway 20 and east of Airline Road as shown on the overhead map. And staff provided Excel sheets with parcels within the said area. This is not to stop a private property owner from building single-family residences or accessory structures, but to reject all applications for mass development such as subdivisions or commercial complexes in this area until a North Ola master plan has been devised by staff and consultants. The moratorium, uh, on the following in the North Ola area, once again, rezonings, comprehensive plan amendments, lot modifications greater than five total acres of area, and residential development applications. This does not prohibit a private property owner from building single-family residences or accessory structures, but to reject all applications of mass development such as subdivisions or commercial complexes in this area until North Ola master plan has been devised by staff and consultants.
Anything, uh, additional, um, commodity you would add to this?
No ma'am, I just, uh, would like to thank Moore Bass Consulting for, excuse me, I'd like to thank Moore Bass Consulting for, uh, including these other parcels, uh, at no additional cost for the county. Um, they're good county partners, so we appreciate them for taking on the extra work.
Okay, all right. Uh, so we have a motion, and so it is based on these parcels. Uh, Stephanie, I want to make sure that, that we, we get this in the record, uh, that it's based on the parcels that are included on this map of display and, uh, the documentation that planning and zoning has far as, uh, listing the partial numbers, um, as, as part of this resolution. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And we got a second. Are there any discussions from the Board? Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
First of all, thank you, Commissioner Anglin, for giving the phone call yesterday morning to discuss this. Uh, also, I'd like to say, well, I'd like to see a, a resolution brought back to the Board for the master plan over on the West Side in 1941 to remove all parcels in District 1. So I'd like to see that as well.
Uh, okay, well, we're, we're dealing with this, and that'll be a discussion that we can have, uh, with regard to the other. So we got a motion and a second. Any further, no, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Uh, County Manager, do you have any County Manager comments, please?
Yes ma'am, good morning again, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board. Um, I do have a couple of comments, and I wanted to start with, um, first thanking the entire Henry County team. Um, last week, about Wednesday of last week, we had several meetings with our emergency management team, and in working with our Board of Education partners, all of our agencies here in the county, we had to make some tough decisions in regards to our county operations and making sure that we were prepared for, um, the hurricane that was projected to come straight through Henry County. Um, I'm not sure that a lot of individuals understand the work that goes into preparing for these type of events, whether it happens or not, but also the work that occurs while we're all home, making sure that, you know, we're bunkering down and making sure that things are in place. And so I want to take this time to thank the entire Henry County team. Um, it is our public safety, it is our stormwater, our DOT, members of our airport, um, our facility maintenance group, making sure that they're going through the buildings, and if we have leaks, they're addressing them. And so we took a couple of days to prepare for that, but it is truly a team effort. Um, I want to brag for a little bit, because one of the things that we got a lot of positive feedback on was our social media page. There were so many residents who said, "Thank you for telling us what's going on." And that's huge, because as we model other communities, we want to make sure that we're always setting the standard. And so we had other communities reaching out saying, "How do y'all do it?" We had photos, we were showing where the roads were closed, and so this is an opportunity for me to brag on our team, because they do it day in and day out. Um, I am hearing that we may have another round of bad weather coming through, and so we will do it all over again. Um, thank you to the Commissioners, because I think either myself or the deputy reached out to each of you all, and every one of you said, "What can I do?" And I think my response was, "Stay home, bunker down, and if you need anything, to please let us know." So Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board, I just want to take this time to thank the team, and to have them to stand, because they worked day in and day out, even when their homes were underwater, and they were dealing with home issues. Um, they were making sure that the residents of Henry County knew what roads they needed to avoid, and making sure that we were keeping our residents updated. So this is a thank you moment, and certainly if the Commissioners have any comments, I want to turn it over to you all, but I would like for Team Henry to stand, um, and just, let's give them a hand of applause. Thank you. And so Chair, I also, um, want to make sure that we keep our Fire Chief in our prayers, because he has family that is in, um, Florida, um, who completely lost everything, and so he is there taking care of his family, but also checking in to make sure that everything that needs to happen in Henry County is happening. So, um, if you have not reached out to Chief Burnett, just send him some words of encouragement, um, as he navigates through rebuilding, uh, with his family in Florida. I also want to update the Board that every morning agenda, you will see either a financial update or quarterly update on, not quarterly, because every is not quarter, but on every agenda for the morning, you will have a financial update on where we are financially. Uh, we get a lot of questions, not only from you all, but from our constituents, on how we're spending, and I think one of the things we want to make sure is that we are telling our own story. We're putting the information out in terms of why we are assessing impact fees, why we are increasing our millage rate, but also showing what projects are being delivered. This morning, there was a lot of amazing moments. We had our ARPA update. There are a number of communities that are going to have to send their ARPA dollars back because they have not obligated those funds. And so our financial services team has really been pushing all of our agencies who receive funding, but also our departments, on making sure that these projects are being delivered, because we have to have those funds obligated by December. And as you heard Ms. Franklin indicate, we have done just that. Uh, we also have really pushed on making sure that our impact fees and projects are being delivered. Um, I know we will follow up with the Commissioners on the impact fee report, because I want to make sure that we get the information out that you all can share with your constituents. But this morning, I'm going to have, um, Lynn, Plan Chan come up and give a capital projects update, because it is very, very important for you all to see where we are with our capital projects. We have a lot of capital projects that are moving, and I don't know that everyone really knows how far along we are with these capital projects. So Lynn is gonna come up and do a capital- we are with these capital projects. So, Lynn is going to come up and do a capital project update. I know the central energy plant is a part of that presentation, so we also have Scott Morris here, who is leading that project, and I do believe we had a member of train to come in the meeting. So, if there are any specific central energy plant questions, I will step away and let the experts answer any questions that the board may have. So, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Lynn to give a capital projects update.
Thank you, County Manager.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and pillars of the Henry County community. Very pleased to be able to give a capital projects update this morning. Soon as Jamie gets a, alright, excellent, wonderful. So, we do, as the county manager stated, we have a lot of things in progress, and I'm going, I broke it into two different areas. One is the capital improvement plan, that's the funding source, and then the second one will be our SPOS funding on capital projects. So, the first, as Sherri stated, I'm going to give a general update on the central energy plant, and then if there's any specific questions, as she said, Scott will be happy to come up and answer any questions. So, our concept design plan is complete. The formal design is pending approval right now. It will be a hybrid central energy plant that will include geothermal and solar energy options, and the estimated project completion is spring of 2027. We do have another trip planned this month. We will be getting with each of you to find the date that's going to work best for your schedules, to go to the central energy plant at the Georgia World Congress Center. So, we'll have that. So, those that may have missed the tour in Florida, you'll have the opportunity to see one in operation here locally. This gives you an idea of what it will look like for those that didn't get to go on the tour. It will be approximately a 15,000 square foot structure. It will, it is planned to be designed to have a 2,300-ton peak cooling design, and they will build in a 15% safety factor for that additional, if there's any additional draw. And it'll also be designed to have approximately 12,869 MMBTU peak heating design with a 25% safety factor built in. Next on our list is our E911 EMA facility. The design is in progress. We are at 65%. The design will be wind and impact resistant, which as we have realized recently, is very important to have in our 911 and EMA facilities. It will be powered by the new central energy plant, and their estimated completion is also spring of 2027. It's trending to where they will both be complete right at the same time. Here's a rendering of the E911 facility. So, E911 is going to be on the upper level, and EMA is going to be on the second level. So, I have some renderings to give you an idea. The 911 facility will be, the upper level is 24,403 square feet, and then the EMA portion is on the lower level. It is 26,793 square feet. Also included with that facility will be an E911 EMA warehouse that will be located adjacent to the EMA on the lower level, and it will be 10,500 square feet. And that is where they will be able to install radios and vehicles. They'll be able to store PPA, all kinds of supplies for disasters like we just experienced. So, it'll be a wonderful facility. It's not just a warehouse. It's going to be functioning for, like I said, installing radios and all types of vehicles for the county. The other part of the design of this complex will be a fire training classroom. It is planned to be 7,760 square feet. It is set up to have two separate classrooms, or a center divider can be opened to have one very large classroom. It will be located adjacent to the planned burn tower, so it'll be very logistically located for their training purposes. Next on the list is our judicial annex. It will house our probate court and our DA's office. It is located at the corner of State Route 155 and John Frank Ward Boulevard. It is an existing three-story building. The renovation, in addition, there will be an addition to the existing building. That design is complete. The demo's complete. We are in the process of getting it priced, and once we have funding in place, I'll be coming back to you guys to award getting that construction underway. And here is a rendering of what the addition to that existing building will look like, and it's a 28,500 square foot facility for all three floors. The next project is our EMS station. It will be located within the city of McDonough. The design is projected and planned to be 100% complete by Monday, the 7th, and will be submitted to plan review. Once it gets through plan review, then we will move forward with putting it out for bid. It is going to be located adjacent to the Henry County Heritage Senior Center. It will be a two-bay EMS station, and its estimated completion is spring of 2026. Here is a rendering of what that facility will look like. It was designed to complement the existing Heritage Senior Center, because it is located directly across from, across the parking area from it. Next, I have SPOS 5 capital projects update. We have two major projects in progress right now. First is our recreation center. It's located at North Mount Carmel Park in Hampton. It's a beautiful, new, multi-generational recreation center. It includes two basketball courts, and will have several multipurpose spaces for a wide variety of programs that Parks and Rec will be developing for that location. Construction is in progress. They don't like me to say that it's ahead of schedule, but I'm going to say it's ahead of schedule and under budget, because I think we said at the groundbreaking that that was our goal, and we are meeting that goal. Their substantial completion date by contract is February 28th, 2025. And I have a rendering. It's 39,706 square feet, and then I also have some progress photos, so you can see how well it's coming along. The aerial photos show well, we've got the roof, all roofs are done. The storefronts are almost complete. They're hanging sheet rock. There's the stacked stone. The, all the exterior finishes are getting put in place. The EFS is almost complete. It is, it's coming along quite well. And these are a couple interior shots. That's the actual lobby. The lobby is a stunning, has a stunning curved entryway, and it's going to be an amazing facility to be very proud of. Our next major SPOS 5 project is the Aquatic Center and Outdoor Water Park. That is located right over here off of Henry Parkway Connector. It will be a premier aquatic facility with world-class amenities that include an indoor, an outdoor, indoor and outdoor pools, has stadium seating, modern support spaces, and the water park is going to be amazing. Construction is in progress, and the estimated completion for that project is May of 2026. And I have some pictures for you here. The rendering, it's, the Aquatic Center itself is 60,437 square feet, and the outdoor water park's square footage is 51,000 square foot. And here's a couple, I know it's hard to see from here, but there is quite a bit of progress from the air. You can see the progress that they're making. All of the roadways are in. They're in the process of having the binder coat applied, curb and gutters going in, obviously all of water, storm, all the things. It's hard to see, the underground electrical, the underground gas, all of that's in progress. And here's a couple other progress photos. A photo on the left is the overflow parking lot. When you first, that's the entrance to the water park there on the left, and then that's the circular parking lot that will access the Aquatic Center and the outdoor water park. And I will be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Yeah, I did have a couple of questions. If you could go back to the slide for the fire. Yeah, yeah, training class. So, is this building going to be, are we in a position that if at some point in the future, we need it to expand, is this facility being built in a manner of if we need an expansion, as opposed to having to, you know, tear down and start over?
So, this training classroom is designed to support the burn tower training area. There is a plan for a larger, more encompassing administration and fire training facility. That's just not, that's in a different phase. This is phase one, so.
Right. So, this is part of the burn tower that will support the training for that burn tower?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. That's what I just wanted to, to make sure that I was clear on.
Okay.
And any questions from any members of the board?
I just want to make a comment.
Okay, yes.
I just, I mean, outstanding job, Lynn.
Thank you.
And your team and staff. And just to do my comment from when the county manager was here, just to all of the staff that were out and about, you guys are definitely appreciated for the sacrifices that you do away from your families. So, just know that we appreciate that, and the community and myself notice with the things that we had on Facebook, our county pages to give updates. So, thank you so much, County Manager, for you and your team.
Yes, I just want to echo what Commissioner Robin stated about the updates that we have, especially during our emergency, any emergencies that we have in the county. Residents truly appreciate it. I promise you, they truly appreciate it. It's something I know we've been working on for months, just trying to get a more robust reporting system for the county, and I know we're still working on some other things. So, thank you for taking leadership on that, County Manager. But they truly appreciate it. I appreciate it. And Lynn, just for the capital projects, SPOS projects, that the recreation facility at North Mount Carmel Park looks amazing. They are doing a fantastic job as part of an overall facelift that we will have at North Mount Carmel Park with the impact fees that we were getting for the district, that that park is going to be amazing. So, just thank you for the work on that. The Aquatic Center is going to be absolutely, absolutely amazing. There are neighboring counties who are looking at us very wistfully, you know, wishing that they had the same type of facility. So, I know it's been a long time in the works, but thank you for, you know, making it happen. So, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
And to your point, Commissioner Lewis, this is not an overnight thing. We don't get up here and say, "Okay, hey, this is going to happen today," you know. This has been a long time coming. This has been a lot of planning, and it has taken us several years to get to this point. We don't make decisions that happen overnight, as some people think that we're able to. And, you know, Sherri, you talked about what you all did during the storm, and I just want to thank staff, Hutch and Rocky. You know, a lot of times where, you know, we thank public safety a lot for everything that they do, but if we can't keep the roads clear, if we can't keep the facilities up and going, you know, then a lot of the other stuff doesn't matter. So, to all of the departments that pitched in during this time, I was, we were, all the commissioners were getting updates via text messages. Thank you all for keeping us informed, because constituents reach out to us, and they want to know what's going on. And so, I think because we were prepared, we didn't have the fatalities, and we didn't have a lot of the disaster that even though we had roads that were flooded, we had trees and power lines, people without power, and those types of things that did occur, but because of the plan, and even Georgia Power was in constant contact. I think if George Cruz texts me one more time.
I appreciate it.
About the power, but they were on top of it. And I think all of our stakeholders and all of our partners as a whole, I want to say thank you to each and every one of them. And you talked about Chief Burnett, but we do have some other employees within the county that have had family members that's impacted. Sharon Bush over at the police station, her mom and sister are, were hit very severely in North Carolina, and she's on her way to take food and items to them. And then we have, I have some churches that have reached out to me that have received phone calls, that a lot of them are headed to South Georgia to help those that are in need in South Georgia with taking supplies and, you know, come and help cut down trees, or whatever it takes to be able to get people back to their daily living. And so, we appreciate all that, our Henry County partners, stakeholders, residents, everybody. And our heart goes out to those families and communities that have been hardly impacted by this storm. And with that, I just also want to mention that today is President Jimmy Carter's birthday. He is 100 years old today, and I believe he is one of the longest living presidents that we have. And so, happy birthday, President Jimmy Carter. Sherri, also I want to mention too, that our congressional leaders, I've had phone calls from Senator Ossoff's office, all of our congressional, even Mike Collins, David Scott, all of our congressional leaders have reached out, wanted to know what Henry County needed, wanted to make sure that we were okay. Governor Kemp as well, wanted to make sure that we were okay here, and appreciate the partnership that our EMA, working along with GMA, to make sure that we were able to assist those in other parts of the state that were without 911 communications. And so, I'm just happy to say that, you know, I think Henry County rocks. I think you guys work hard, and I really appreciate the work from staff, from the Henry County team, because truly, we are a Henry County team, and I just do want to thank each of you, everyone, for that as well.
And, Madam Chair, I want to, now that you've become a manager, to do updates, because I feel like today is a moment of just public privilege to further tell the board some other things that are going on with our emergency management team, and how we have been called on by the state to assist.
Okay, yeah. Kevin, if you would, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair. You touched on, we have an amazing team that deployed to South Georgia. They're currently in Augusta. That is our Henry County Emergency Management Team, as well as our Henry County Fire Rescue Team. They responded as part of the statewide incident management team through our statewide mutual aid agreement. So, they are there to establish those 911 lines, the communication piece between all public safety, and assist with any needs that are there. So, we're excited about that. We're excited to be able to help. One of the big assets that we sent was our mobile command vehicle, which was presented earlier as an ARPA purchase. So, that's not only making an impact here locally, but making a statewide impact. So, we're really happy to see that utilized. Another thing I wanted to mention, today and tomorrow, we are partnering with the Henry County Water Authority to accept water bottle donations across the street at Red Hawk Park. So, if you are a citizen looking to donate, this is going to South Georgia counties that were impacted by the hurricane. So, that vehicle's going to be manned there, the trailer, across the street at Red Hawk Park from 8:00 to 5:00 today. But the trailer remains, and you can leave bottled water out there overnight if you can help there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we can just, we got this posted on our government.
Yes, ma'am. It's on all social media platforms.
Social media. Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, thank you. So, at this particular time, I would... So at this particular time, I would like to ask for a motion for us to enter into executive session due to a personnel matter. So can I get a motion?
I'll move that we go to executive session.
Got a motion on the second here, all in favor. Okay, at this time, we will take a break. We will go into executive session and then we will return after, after executive session.
Jamie, I don't even have to shut my computer.
I'd like to get a motion to reconvene from executive session.
Motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Price. All in favor? Motion carries. I need approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor. Our next upcoming board meeting is October 15th at 6:30 PM is a regular scheduled BOC meeting. October 24th at 3 PM is a special joint call meeting with the Henry County Ward Authority and the Henry County Development Authority. At this particular time, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.